Everyone that's here for being here, we're gonna go through the agenda as printed. My name is John Swanson. I'm the chairperson of the Planning Commission, so I welcome. It's a little bit cooler in here than it is outside, so we'll get started, okay? So I'm gonna call to order this meeting on Tuesday, July the ninth, twenty twenty four of the Dallas Oregon Planning Commission, and I'll ask staff to do a roll call, please, for members present.
Commissioner Newell.
Here.
Commissioner Kowash. Commissioner Gro.
Here.
Commissioner Swanson.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Spofford.
Here.
And Commissioner Banford notified staff that he wouldn't be here tonight.
Thank you very much. So we do have a quorum present. Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is approval of minutes from our regular meeting from last month, July the ninth, twenty twenty four. I assume commissioners, we've all had a chance to look them over. Are there any corrections, additions, or comments on the minutes as printed? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute as written.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. And all those in favor, voice vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Okay, it's the uh, the minutes are approved. The next agenda item is public comment. And this is an opportunity, and we've got a full room here today, so I want to make sure this is clear. Uh, this is an opportunity for any citizens uh, to speak on items that are not on our agenda this evening. So if you have any questions or concerns or comments about anything that we don't plan on discussing, this is your opportunity to bring them up before we dive into the items that are there. So do we have anybody present that would like to speak on an agenda or on an item that's not on our agenda this evening? Okay, we have one. Sir, please come on up and sit at the desk here in the front. Thank you.
Please, first a question.
Yeah, you wanna say your name and your address?
That's what I keep.
Oh, okay.
Uh-huh.
We make it as easy as we can.
I appreciate that.
Not as possible, but as easy as we can.
There you go. My name is Tina Guy, G U Y. My address is one three, well, excuse me, one eight three zero Southeast Holman. I live basically right behind what used to be Van Wells.
Thank you.
And I am here to express my extreme displeasure with the fact that my house is zoned industrial. And because of that, I cannot get any kind of a loan for a home equity line of credit, a home equity agreement, or even refinance my house. I've been trying to figure out for the last few days. I just found out the full extent of this, I believe, last Wednesday. And I was trying to figure out the best way to do this, and I decided that the best way to convey why this is a problem for me is by giving you some numbers. So to start with, two hundred and thirteen to two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That's the amount of equity that I have currently available on my house. More than two dozen. That's the number of banks, lending institutions, private companies, private investors who I've contacted to try to get a home equity loan, and I've gotten an answer of, we don't lend to industrial property or without a letter explicitly stating that it could be rebuilt as a single-family residence such as it is now, without needing to complete extra reviews and additional conditions by the city, no loans in any amount can be guaranteed to be secured. Sixty-two. That's the number of houses in the area that we're talking about. We're not talking about what used to be Van Wells that are actually industrial properties. We're not talking about um, western smelting and metals, which is right across the street from my house. We're not talking about uh, uh, Forest River or Warehouse or or uh, even Mac um, Mac Grills. They're basically right across from, we're talking about houses.
I know what you mean. Thank you.
That people are living in, that people have been living in, that people have bought with the idea of investing in their future that are completely worthless. Because you can't access the money that's available in my house right now. Hundred and thirty-four to a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That's the amount of money that my house has appreciated since I bought it in two thousand and seventeen. Between the appraisal that I had done to buy my house and what is it exp- is is a the approximate current value, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. But here's the number that really, really, really pisses me off. Thirteen point two to thirteen point eight million dollars.
What does that represent?
If those sixty-two houses have anywhere close to the amount of equity that I have in my house, the amount of money that is not available is thirteen million dollars. Now, I understand that we can't use that number because nobody knows what the guy next door to me, okay? What we can use, however, is the amount of money that it has appreciated in the last seven years. The hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. If you take that money over the sixty-two houses, you're still talking about more than eight million dollars. And I would question the logic because that's money that the that the city is losing also. Okay? I can't get a home equity land of credit. I can't make improvements to my house. Were I to be able to do that, my appraised value would increase. And all of the sixty-one other houses would increase. And that money would directly affect the tax base that this city doesn't have access to right now. You're talking about losing out on a lot of money because whoever decided to change basically from church to Godsy and from south of the railroad tracks. All of that area is affected by this zoning park. And that's a lot of money. I've worked my butt off to try and have that money available to me. And I can't, and my house is worthless. I can't even sell my house. Because I would have to disclose this to whoever buys it and says, oh, by the way, if you want to try and get a home equity loan at some point in the future, you can't do it. My house is worthless because of the zoning of industrial property, even though my house was built in almost a hundred years ago.
Okay. Can I ask?
You can ask me anything.
Couple of questions. Uh, number one, uh, you bought your house in two thousand and seventeen. That area has been, that whole area down there has been zoned industrial, including all those residences that are uh, pre-existing non-conforming uses in the industrial zoning district. So when you buy your house, did you, were you able to get a loan to buy the house?
I was able to get a loan because we, my, I bought my house from my aunt and uncle.
I see.
And we ran into a glitch with me trying to get my house. And I got a letter that says yada, 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 yada.
From, is that City Letterhead?
Yes, sir.
I can see it through the back.
Yes, sir. It is. Okay? And apparently, the wording was enough for the original document. But I gave, sent this letter to my nephew, who is a, a um, mortgage broker. And here's the reason why they won't lend on it, is this paragraph. "Conditional use are those uses which, due to the nature of their impacts on surrounding land use, require a case-by-case review and analysis and approval by the Planning Commission." "The review of the conditional use permit is subject to the standards of chapter four point four, and if granted, if granted, may include conditions, limitations, or restrictions on the development to meet site-specific concerns." Because it is not guaranteed. Because it's not a residential property, it's not guaranteed to be approved, they won't approve the loan. And my, the, my, well, my nephew's answer was, the city of Dallas really screwed everybody on that street.
Well, let me ask you a question. Have you chatted with city staff about this since this has come up? Before you came here tonight?
I sent an email voicing my concerns to the person who signed this letter.
And that is?
Chase.
Okay. I recommend you confer with Chase.
Okay.
And if necessary, you can contact the city manager's office. Uh, there's a lot of homes that are in that industrial district that are pre-existing, non-conforming, continue to be residences in perpetuity for as long as possible. I'm not a finance expert. That's not what, that's not under the scope of what we review at the Planning Commission. So I would recommend that you engage with city staff, and if necessary, engage with a realtor or an attorney and try and get to the bottom of it. I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand your concern. Uh, so I appreciate you coming in, and all I can say is good luck to you, and if you want to come back anytime, let us know if you've made any progress or not. I certainly welcome you to do that.
Yes. I have not had an opportunity to contact the sixty-one other houses. I've, I've contacted a few of them, and the ones that I have are just as pissed as I am. I am going to contact every single one of these houses. So you guys are probably going to get more people that are gonna sit there and say, hey, wait a second. I've got a lot of money tied up in this.
If, look, I'm not here to offer advice because I'm not staff, uh, but I have been in a previous life, been a, a planner, a staff planner. If you get enough properties together, perhaps you could organize and apply for a rezoning request for a group. It's easier for more than a single property to get a rezoning than it is multiple properties. And again, that's just off the cuff.
You, did you say it's single property? It's easier for multiple properties than single property.
A larger area. So, I mean, you have, you have avenues to explore, is, is all, is all I can say. I can't solve your problem right here, right now. I, I, but I, I understand your, your concern, and I appreciate you coming in, taking your time this evening, and letting us know.
I also just wanted to warn you guys that there's probably gonna be more of them. Thanks.
It's okay. Yep, you bet. You bet. Anybody else? Public comment on stuff that's not on our agenda this evening? Is there anybody that we have in the queue electronically that's joining us?
We have no callers in the queue.
No callers in the queue, and that's total. Okay. All right, so if there's no more uh, public comment that are not on the agenda this evening, then we'll move into agenda item number five, which is public hearings. Our first public hearing this evening is subdivision twenty-three dash O two, Crystal Estates, Gen Ray Properties LLC. It's a twenty-five lot subdivision uh, that's located down at the end of Academy Street. And uh, I'm going to open this public hearing, but I'm gonna let everybody know for the record uh, that the applicant has again requested a continuance uh, for another month. There are a couple of sticking points in the application and the staff report that accompanies it that they're didn't want to talk to the city about, and they feel that it's necessary to ask for another continuance. We did this last month. So what I'm gonna do real fast is I'm gonna open the public hearing. Uh, I see that uh, our owner applicant is here. If he would like to address the commission, I'll give you that opportunity, Dr. Edwardson. And uh, and if there's anybody here that came this evening to testify on this public hearing, I will open the hearing so we can take your testimony. So if you're here to talk about uh, the Crystal Estates subdivision, our first public hearing, you will have an opportunity this evening to go on the record and make testimony. So what I'm gonna do right now is I'm gonna declare the public hearing open regarding at seven fourteen P M. Uh, the public hearing for the property located at the end of Academy Street, and that is uh, map seven point five point three three B C, tax lot number one O five. So the request from the applicant is to uh, have another, be granted another continuance uh, which will put this subdivision before the Planning Commission on August the, I don't know.
Thirteen.
The thirteenth? Uh, uh, Dr. Edwardson, are you, would you like to address the commission, or shall we just go forward with your request?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, is there anyone here this evening that would like to testify and go on the record regarding this subdivision that we are going to consider a continuance for? That was bad grammar, but I think everybody understands what I tried to say there. So is anybody here to talk about that subdivision? I'm not seeing any nods or any hands. So what I would like to do uh, is entertain a, a motion from one of the planning commissioners to grant the continuance. And I will say, I just learned this a couple of hours ago, and I will say uh, that the city manager and the staff does endorse the ongoing talks that they're having and is supportive of granting the continuance. So that's the little bit of input we do have from the uh, uh, city manager's office and city staff side, so.
The continuance is stated.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion to grant the continuance and a second. All uh, in favor, voice vote say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same, so it passes unanimously. This uh, the Gen Ray subdivision is going to be continued until the August Planning Commission meeting, and we're gonna close the public hearing now. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our second public hearing this evening. And that is site that, site design review application number twenty-four O two. Dallas Apartments uh, presented by Prism Development LLC, which is a sixty-six new multifamily unit uh, apartment complex near the northwest corner of Ellendale Avenue and James Howe Road. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I'm gonna read from a script that I have here before me so that we stay in line with state land use law and city development code. Want to make sure that we do this exactly correctly, because this is why we're all here. And I assume that most of you folks that are here are here to either learn about uh, local civics or you have uh, an interest in this particular project, so. I will now open the public hearing at seven seventeen P M. And this public hearing is regarding property located West Ellendale and James Howe Road. Tax map seven point five point three zero D, tax lot number two O two. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission, and the public hearing is now open. As the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I read the following statement. "The failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the planning commission and the parties involved an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based upon that issue. So please, direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria listed in the criteria in the Dallas Development Code you believe applies to this decision. Applicable approval criteria are found in the Dallas Development Code, chapter point two point zero six zero A, Site Design Review Approval Criteria. At this time, I will ask if any members of the Planning Commission At this time, I will ask if any members of the planning commission has a conflict of interest, has conducted a site visit or an ex parte contact on this particular application. Seeing none, I will move on. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with the staff report, followed by planning commissioners' questions for the staff based on that report. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant, including any member of the applicant. Each member of the applicant, like praying, testified for a total of 15 minutes. And this also may be followed by questions of the planning commissioners to the applicant. Thereafter, we can hear from all other, all other people that are interested in presenting testimony on the side of, before the commissioner. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. We, after that, after everyone that's here to speak up the issue, we will then provide the applicant five minutes to rebut any testimony received. After we've heard all testimony, I will close the public hearing and ask the planning commission to deliberate and then ask if there's a motion in response to this proposal. In this case, the planning commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. So at this time, we'll start the staff report. Chase, may we have the staff report, please?
I guess you. So, um, as mentioned, this is for the proposed apartment development of James Howe Road and West Ellendale. Site designer view, there's, uh, five approval criteria for those. Um, the application is complete. Uh, the underlying land use district standards are met. That's the standards of Article 2. Um, the, any non-conforming development on the site is upgraded. Uh, the design standards of Article 3 are met and any pre-existing conditions of approval are met. So those are your five, uh, kind of core criteria for site design review. Um, according to Article 2, Article 3, those are, you know, entire chapters. So, um, a lot of different standards contained within those. Um, so I'm not going to go through the entire written staff report that would, uh, would be here all day if I did that. Um, but just giving some background for your context here. Um, so this is located at, uh, uh, the intersection of, uh, James Howe Road and West Ellendale in the northwest part of town. Um, kind of zooming in on that, we can see that it is on the outer periphery of the city. Um, there's, uh, some residential development, uh, simply. Uh, but there's also still a lot of undeveloped land in that area. The Wyatt node is immediately to the east of this property. And so that is one of our main, uh, nodes for growth in the city. Um, but thus far, most of that development's been taking place to the north. So this is closer to, uh, to. Zooming a little closer, we can see kind of the odd configuration of this property around. And a single family house there, one on, uh, James Howe Road. Um, and one on Ellendale. So you've got kind of those, those notches that are kind of cut out of the property. Makes, uh, development a little bit tricky. With some topography to the site, James Howe Road, um, is kind of low and slopes, um, to the west. A pitfall, so. Not a flat site, so a bit tricky to try and develop. Uh, there's also wetlands and, uh, right, very good corridor in the very northeast corner of the property. As you can see where the, the kind of the greenway, uh, the line of trees there cuts across. Um, as we look at the, uh, the site plan for the, the development, uh, James Howe Road, there's on the bottom. Um, and so there's, um, essentially, uh, six apartment buildings in three different styles. Um, that would be constructed, uh, the C building apartments, uh, closest to the intersection of James Howe and Ellendale, um, would have their own parking and driveway. And then the A buildings and the B building, the small one, um, would share access on the James Howe. I see the configuration of these, uh, these buildings. Um, this is sort of where, uh, the, the main adjustment request comes into play. Um, we do have a code standard, uh, essentially that says you shouldn't, you shall not place, uh, parking areas between, uh, streets. And then this building, uh, because of the sloping of the site. That once presents challenges in terms of, uh, site grading. Um, and so they are wanting to change adjustment to be able to place those. Part of the greatest means the building. Um, the staff report goes into, um, some greater detail on kind of the, uh, the justification for that except, uh, adjustment request. Um, and then of course, the applicant's narrative included additional language about that as well. So. The, uh, recommendation, uh, from staff is approval with, uh, conditions of approval. Um, several of which are boilerplate, uh, conditions regarding, uh, you know, development in wetland areas, uh, getting a building permits, those, those sorts of things. Um, but there are some specific to this, uh, development. The first of which, number four, um, is that where James Howe Road, uh, street and frontage improvements, uh, across the forest. Um, the developer shall coordinate with the adjacent property owner to construct that street crossing or consent to a development agreement, uh, for the future construction of that street crossing. Um, it says a challenge because the corner of their property is more or less in the middle of the stream. And so it's hard to build a, a ridge or a culvert if you only have one half of that. So that's why either coordination with the adjacent property owner or future improvement, um, would be the, the way to approach that. Um, because it's very difficult to build half a bridge. I, I'm sure you could make a valiant effort of it, but not very practical. The next, uh, regards to the, uh, traffic impacts to the Levens and Ellendale. Which is already, uh, somewhat congested intersection, already failing performance metrics. Um, the applicant's traffic impact analysis, uh, did, uh, address the, the impact of the development in this, uh, uh, Ellendale corridor, including, uh, back to the particular intersection. Um, so specifically recommending the developer, um, enter into a development agreement, uh, to pay, uh, their proportionate share of the cost of those intersection improvements at that intersection. Um, we've been having developers, um, kind of elsewhere on the side of town, um, entering similar agreements for the improvement of this intersection, which is expected to occur, um, in the next few years. It's on the city's capital improvement project undertake that. And so other developer essentially. Uh, of the project cost based on the number of trips that were projected in the process. The sixth condition of approval is a sort of a minor technical issue. Um, the parking area behind the building B, on a building base, serving building B. The site plan measures this property line, um, at nine foot six inches. Um, they were taking measurement in the back of the curb. Um, so, uh, the standard is 10 foot. And so basically pushing that parking lot six inches further from the property. Um, minor site change. Uh, for number seven, um, there are two trash receptacles that are identified in the site plan. Um, and so we do require, um, a visual screening of trash enclosures, um, which was not discussed in the application materials. So, uh, condition of approval ensuring that that code standard is complied with. Um, you know, again, standard kind of technical issue. Um, one of the more challenging issues is, um, we have code standards with regards to pedestrian activity in development sites. Uh, make a little less car oriented. Um, and so there's, uh, essentially, uh, a requirement for pedestrian activity to be, uh, direct and convenient. Um, as designed, it's not necessarily the most direct or convenient to get from the street to some of the other buildings. So proposed initial approval to require another pedestrian walkway along the north driveway. This is another point where, um, an adjustment has been requested, uh, specifically between building B, the small building, uh, and building C at the intersection of Ellendale. There's no pedestrian connection shown between those two buildings. Um, indicated there is a pretty significant grade difference between where those two buildings live, which would make pedestrian connection, uh, practical. Uh, code does allow that when you have, um, that, that pedestrian tracks that are required to be practicable. Um, and so when it's impractical to provide a connection, it does due to steep slopes. That connection can be. Um, initial approval is only for the, uh, actually they're on the north side as shown. Um, so. That's a proposed condition. Um, number nine relates to the, sort of the east-west, uh, street that's. They're showing currently a sidewalk only on one side and the, the street improvements don't extend all the way to the property line. And so the way that this is being raised, uh, if that east-west street is being dedicated to the public as part of this project, um, then that other sidewalk, uh, needs to be added and the, uh, uh, improvements need to extend all the way to that, uh, that west property line. If they're dedicating it in the future, um, then that can of course be, uh, uh, dealt with at a future date. There is an existing development agreement regarding, uh, construction of the east-west street during thereof. So, uh, further deferring of the actual application of it um, would not be necessarily a detriment at this time to the city. But if they are going to dedicate it this time, it needs to meet city standards. So. Um, and then finally, uh, parking lot for building C. Um, the landscape buffer on the west side of that parking lot, um, does need the four foot minimum, uh, landscape depth. Um, necessary to ensure adequate soil, water and space for healthy plant growth. Uh, they're showing a four foot high evergreen, uh, hedge along that to prevent headlights and whatnot from shining out onto the street, which is what the code requires. Um, but you need, do need a certain amount of landscape bed to be able to plant that into. So, um, adjusting the parking lot a little bit to, to make that a bit wider. So those are kind of the, the conditions of approval that staff are recommending with regards to the application. Um, certainly happy to answer, uh, any questions that the planning commission may have about the application or those conditions. Um, otherwise, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Chase, uh, so commissioners, let's, i- if we have any questions on this project, let's try and save, uh, our questions about the element itself for the applicant. Do we have any questions of Chase and his staff report? I have a couple, but I'll let you first. Go ahead.
Um, additional five, uh, for intersection. That is all funded and ready to go. We only pulled up additional funding. Could be made available. That's the only reason we're not. That's a question that.
And so, um, probably speaking of the microphone, um, our public works department may be better able to address that. Um, but as you yourself indicated, additional funding is a consideration for that project. And so one source of additional funding is developer contributions. Um, and so that's one of the things that we are, you know, to be doing this. Um, making sure that everyone kind of pays their fair share, as it were. But, um, again, I'm not the public works department, so there's only so much I can speak to on, on that matter. Uh, Tom Gilson is in the room. I don't know if he's prepared to address that, but I see him standing up. So quite possibly.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Um, so the project that you're referring to the.
Sorry.
Tom Gilson. Tom Gilson, Engineering Division of Public Works. So the, um, the, um, project is fully designed and we went out about, about, uh, two years ago. We're getting close to being ready to put it out to bid, got the estimates on it. Um, we can fund the bulk of the project through SDC fees, but not all of the project because the intersection itself has failing, has had failing motion, uh, movements or is, um, has, uh, movements that will be failing. Just from, uh, the current conditions and SDCs can only be used for capacity building projects, not for fixing problems. So part of that also has to be funded outside of our SDCs. So any funding source that we can get, besides our own, you know, pocketbook, will be helpful for that. And lots of times, projects like those are driven by developer contributions. So any, any additional capacity that's going to be added to that intersection based off of, uh, a future build or a build, a current build, um, we look at the possibility of getting funding through there. So we have, uh, some other developments like Chase said, other developments in that area, which we've already started negotiating, negotiating what their percentage would be.
Answer my question. Thank you.
Yep.
Tom, when you say failing, are you talking from a traffic perspective?
The level of service, level of service of the intersection itself. So, yeah.
This developments which add stress on the intersection.
Yeah.
Is reasonable to ask them to help pave to improve that.
Yeah, it's the level of service grade, basically A to F. All right. And we already, like currently, right now, I think some of the movements are at a C, but that's only because we did, made it always stop.
You're knocking traffic?
Yeah.
I know what you're talking about. It's enough to, to make sure that we're talking.
Yes.
Traffic problems as opposed to the structure.
No, no, it's not falling into the ground. We just need to.
Problems are something this development will affect. And so asking them.
Yeah, volumes of new cars through there. Yes. Yep.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions, uh, planning commissioners for staff on the staff report? Andy?
Yes, Chase, um, is Ellendale fully improved? This property has Ellendale's, um.
Uh, no. So the frontage, um, along Ellendale, um, is not, uh, improved on this side. It's, it's currently just a, a ditch. Um, and so the plan that the applicant has submitted does show, um, construction of, uh, curb and, and gutter and sidewalk. Along the. Uh, yes, that'd be a requirement.
As I noticed, the condition only talks about James Howe Road and it says to be improved to the James Howe level.
Yes. So the, the James Howe construction standard is slightly different than the, sort of the code standard for streets of that classification. Uh, when they built the, the east side of James Howe as part of the, uh, Wyatt node, uh, master plan area. Um, they basically took the bike lane, um, out of the street, um, where the traffic is and put it, um, basically at the sidewalk level. So you'd have that greater protection from moving vehicles, um, which is not necessarily the code standard, um, but is actually generally slightly cheaper to construct because it doesn't have to then support the weight of trucks. So, um, and provides a better environment for bicycling on. Um, and so that's why that language, um, for condition number four, or I'm sorry, condition number three was included. Um, because it is slightly different than the, the normal, uh, development code standard, but would match what was shown in the applicant's materials. Um, so just kind of.
Do we need that as a separate condition or is that?
No, because Ellendale, uh, as I understand, is going to be improved to just to the standard, uh, city, uh, requirement. Um, not to that special kind of James House standard.
And we don't have to have a special condition to have that happen. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. Because again, it's shown in the applicant's materials.
Well, I mean, yeah, you know where I'm going. Um, the stream crossing, is it in the right of way? I mean, I know you said that it's only, it goes out to the middle of it, but I'm assuming is there right of way already along there? I mean, could they, could we definitely, could we possibly have the right of way to the other side already? And since it's in the right of way, is there a reason we couldn't have that built or is there not a?
So my recollection is that, um, the property to the north, uh, the right of way narrows. Um, and so, uh, there's not enough space to construct, um, as there is on the south side. When that property to the north develops, they. When that property to the north develops, they'd be expected to dedicate additional right-of-way to include street frontage improvements.
Okay.
Um but that dedication has not happened.
Okay.
Um it did happen with this property when they did a previous uh partitioning, they dedicated ten feet of right-of-way. Um so.
Okay, with the access road that runs east-west, you talked about dedicating or. Extending utilities to the west if this were right of way. Are they not required to extend utilities to upstream properties if it's not in the right of way?
Um so extending utilities to upstream properties um. Is a code requirement kind of regardless of if there's a a street specifically to it. Um the definition of what is upstream then is a little bit vague. Um could properties get utilities run to them through other means? Possibly.
And you said it's downhill to the west, is that correct?
So west is uphill, yes, so east is the, so James Howe, it's kind of different.
It would be.
Right, when we look at the uh kind of the overall uh site photograph. As you know, but you can see diagonally, there's the drainage way that cuts across on the north side. Um so that's a low point. Um Ellendale is lower down than the development site. So south is a drainage direction as well, as is uh east James Howe, so. A couple of different ways that other properties could get utility services.
And I assume, is that all one property to the west of this? Or?
Um no, to the west has a couple of different property owners.
Okay, and so we're not required to, or they're not required to extend right um. Utilities to the to the west, um because it seems like we'd have some landlocked utility problem. Properties and. There'd be, I mean, they'd have to basically dig up this place to get.
Right, it's it's quite possible that um as part of the construction uh plan approval. Um that the public works department would require extension of a water main to the property line.
That at this point, we're just.
Right, yeah, um water in particular, they try to loop the lines as much as possible to equalize the pressure.
I'd be more concerned with storm if there isn't any other way to get to Ellendale, so, but if that happens later date. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Good. Any other questions on the staff report? Mine were answered by the questions already asked, so thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh so now it's time to hear from the applicant. So applicant, please step forward, uh any members of your team. As a reminder, you have uh fifteen minutes to present your application and. Please state your name and your mailing address for the record.
Uh Jim Tabor with Studio Three Architecture, two seven five uh Northeast Court Street, Salem, Morgan.
Richard Lewis, Prism, Belmont, two three eight five Niagara Street, North, Kaiser.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, go ahead.
Yeah, so just to add a little bit more context here, um so we uh are proposing sixty-six apartment units. Across six separate three-story buildings, three-story uh walk-up apartments. Um including thirty-one-bedroom apartments and thirty-six two-bedroom apartments. Um we have a hundred and twenty onsite parking spaces, uh which exceeds zoning uh minimums. Uh so there shouldn't be concern of overflowing um into neighboring properties uh with vehicle vehicle parking. So we also got uh stormwater uh will all be treated on-site. Uh that was a little bit of a concern at the neighborhood meeting. Uh but that's going to be lining and buffering James Howe Road and Ellendale to the buildings and parking areas. Yeah, and then we. We uh. Kept the wetlands intact and preserved them the best we could, and there's ample open space, uh so should be a nice, pretty green development here. Uh there was a couple of items, if this is the appropriate time uh to address them and the conditions of approval, we had just one um. Clarification or. We'll get a little back and forth on this uh regarding the sidewalks on both sides of the new east-west street they're putting in there. Um we had some issues with. The distance between the two driveways, and so we tried to shove the southerly uh new street, east-west sheet street as south as we could. Um but now uh we're kind of up against the neighboring property, there's some grading issues, and so we're going to have some pretty large retaining walls if we try to get a sidewalk in there. Uh so we'd love to just have it on the north side if possible, uh we just wanted to bring up that issue. Also, uh regarding the orientation of the building, uh in the staff report, it was brought up uh the concept of the eyes on the street and. Um kind of watching over the sidewalk right away and all that, and I and I feel in this case, this particular site, and maybe that applies more to serve an urban context. Urban planning um concept. You know, if it's downtown Salem or Portland or something, you want shopkeepers and and residents to be looking over the street. But here we just have a small sidewalk and there's not too much foot traffic, uh so I'd rather those eyes be on the parking and sort of the residents and kids at play and that sort of thing. Um. In addition to that, so we do have a stormwater buffer, we kind of had to put them where they are, just the natural topography of the site, it's deep. So we had to put the rain gardens along James Howe Road and Ellendale. Um sort of forced into that. And so with that, if we were to put the buildings up against the rain gardens, now people are parking in the rear, they have to carry, you know, bags of groceries. All the way around the building um to get to their apartments and just didn't. The way we have felt like it made more sense to us. Then parking's not right up against the majority of the site anyway in the street, there's going to be that vegetative buffer, there's the rain garden. Um there's going to be additional trees, we we include the landscaping plan, so there will be some screening of that parking area. See. And also, uh well, I've got here, uh. Like to ask the question of building B, if it would be supported to face the new street if we were to rotate that building. To face northeast, right now it's facing south towards James Howe Road, um and it seems like if this is a new street. East west, that's suddenly a driveway, then then it would probably meet. The letter of the code if it were to orient to the north.
So you're talking, I I'm I'm I don't mean to interrupt you.
Nope, it's good.
Yeah, so you're talking about making a change to the site design that we're reviewing right now.
I was I was just throwing it out there.
Well, that's that's.
That's fine, you can say no.
Uh I'm I'm not saying yes or no, but I'm saying what we can, what we're here to consider is the application you submitted.
Fair enough, there's a question.
If if you and 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 Chase, I'm gonna ask you to back me up on this. So if you make a decision down the road when you're getting ready to build to reorganize the site design. Would what he suggests require coming back? Before the client planning commissioner, would that be a minor enough change that it could be reviewed administratively? Um I don't want to monkey up the works, but I don't want to go through a whole process if you're already proposing a change to what you.
Yeah, neither do we, yeah.
I I would imagine that the uh the rotation of the building orientation could be accomplished through a. Uh modification of the prior approval, we do have a a process for that, and so that seems like something that would be. Minor enough not to necessarily warrant your attention.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I just. Thank you for asking. Yeah, well, that's great. Did you have anything else to add?
That's perfect, just in in regards to the building B, what that reorientation does is. Eliminates the view of that building to the house below. They're looking out to the north instead of to the.
Remind everyone which what is B.
It's it's the single.
In the middle.
It's a little guy.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, we should let her go, but uh by doing that, uh they're not, again. Looking down on, and I know that's a concern with with those folks.
Okay, and yeah, thanks for adding that because it did come up at the neighborhood meeting, there's a lot of concern, so there's develop it, development just east. And everyone's backyards are kind of up against the right of way there, and it was a concern that these new buildings are going to be kind of peering down into everyone's backyard, so. Another reason kind of supporting the arrangement of pushing the buildings to the west um on the site.
Okay. Is there anything else that you'd like to add bef- to conclude your presentation? Don't think so. Okay, well, thank you very much, stand by, uh you can take your seats, uh. Because what what no, well, first of all, hang on one second, because now this is an opportunity for planning commissioners to ask you any questions. And again, let's uh let's focus our questions on what they presented to us and let's kind of maybe. Take that modification of the or the orientation, the one building kind of out of it, because uh we're looking at the overall site design review. Of this, that's what we're charged to do here this evening. So commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant before they stand down and we hear from folks that are here to testify on it? Carol.
Clarify. Question, so um you were talking about it not being an urban project, and of course Dallas is not as urban. Um but I wonder, once the commercial goes into the planned Wyatt Node. If the walkability traffic might increase at that point, so it might be more important then than it appears right now. Just a thought for your design.
Yeah, absolutely, um. And it's hard to say, uh I don't know what that future is going to look like there, I mean, it's pretty remote, though, I mean, there will be commercial. And I think.
It's just a little strip model, it's not going to be huge by any means.
Right. Yeah, and we want to see people walking, but I mean, there are, yeah, sixty-six apartments, a hundred and twenty parking spaces, so I mean. It feels like we want to protect that a bit as well, so.
John, go ahead.
Am I correct in assuming you've gotten this far in this process that fire access, turnaround, all that stuff has been approved?
Uh yes, yes.
Good question.
And the buildings are sprinkled.
Okay. And again, we're 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 reviewing design, not 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 building uh specification. Andy, go ahead.
First, a comment on what she asked. You're talking about it being a non-commercial, not so commercial as Salem or Portland, whenever I hear that, I think of Cupertino. Um. It's Dallas. We've got all this wonderful land and not much developed. It's not going to be that way forever, so planning for the future, I think, is really important, especially pedestrian access. Um my second question goes to your first comment, I think you were talking about the landscape buffer. And I didn't understand, can you go over that again, so I know what you were talking about?
Yeah, with the rain garden.
Um you said something about a hedge and and visibility, and I thought you were talking about. The southeast corner, but I wasn't sure.
Oh, so I guess plan south or north is actually.
North is that, yes, yeah, so south and east.
Right, uh so yeah, the east side, just along the parking, uh will all be a rain garden.
Okay.
That big void there.
The big void, okay.
And then the big void to the. Plan west, south end of building C, the farthest to the left there, that'll be a a stormwater planters.
Okay. Were you talking about the little parking lot that's just adjacent to James Howe with building A? Did you mention that, or?
Um I didn't, uh but we do have a hedge uh planned for that, there's.
And I I believe that, sorry, it's where Chase had uh had uh mentioned before that.
And so that's got to be widened, and that's one of our condition, and we have to increase.
Yeah, that one, the one. He was talking about is the other area.
The bigger one.
The bigger one.
Okay.
There's going to be a similar.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were talking about, I kind of lost it. Anyway, uh that's fine, thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions to the applicant before we ask them to stand down? Uh. I had one. Oh, I I've I've got a clarifying question, and it has to do with the orientation of the buildings to the street. It is a code requirement, we're talking about urban versus non-urban, but the fact of the matter is, you're requesting an adjustment. Uh based on the topography and the fact that those rain gardens need to be downhill from. The area where they float, where where the water flow comes off of the impervious surface, so it's not just an aesthetic. And 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 I don't mean to put words into your mouth, but I understand it to be more than just an aesthetic thing, that it is actually like a topographical issue. Uh that that you're asking to have the parking in front of the buildings and the buildings further set back, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. That was the one question that I had, this is our last chance to ask, well, it's not our last chance, but. I- i- in in the order that we do things, any other questions? So gentlemen, thank you very much for your presentation, uh stand down, you'll have an opportunity to. Uh speak to any issues that are brought up by folks that are here to testify on the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome, uh. So now we'll hear from those in attendance tonight who would like to address the planning commission on this item. Remind you from our script that we heard from earlier, and that is your your testimony. Uh. Folks, you can make comment on this project in whatever regard you like. But in terms of our consideration for approval of this site design review, they need to be applicable to criteria that are in the Dallas Development Code. So we want to do this in in an orderly way, so why don't we just start with folks that would like to step up and testify and and. Just put raise your hand if you'd like to testify on this. See, one, two. And it's okay if you don't, that's okay, and if you have three, and if we, and if you, if a question comes up while we're doing this, four, that's great. Uh I'm gonna, uh we'll do this, I'll just sort of start from this side of the room, we're going to ask you folks to come up, have a seat. We want you to state your name. Okay. Well, we've got a sign-in sheet here that says, these are all 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 you folks that signed in, and I appreciate that, but you may necessarily not want to testify. So I'll I'll check you off as we go, um. So what we'll do is uh you're going to step up, you're going to state your name and your address, and the purpose of that is uh. So that you can be contacted and be involved in notifications on the outcome. Of the decision that we're going to consider here this evening. So let's start whoever was furthest, closest to the door, why they wanted to testify. Come on up and have a seat, sit down, we're going to give you a. Five minute, I I was going to say, I couldn't remember the time, but we'll give you about five minutes to to testify. State your piece, and we really appreciate you coming in and and giving this matter your attention, thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Susan Sutherland, and we reside at one four six zero West Ellendale, which is. Um the all of the, not all of it along the north boundary line or the property line, but. We we go from Ellendale to. Maybe. The second building in the. In the build.
So your next door neighbor.
We're right behind this, yeah, um. I'm not opposed, just so you know, I'm not opposed, oh, we're not opposed to apartments. Um but we we do have some concerns, and my first consideration in all of this would be, it would be very nice if. You did not approve building B, I don't, I mean, I think that's. Not very kind to the people that have the property in front of that. Um it, part of it will probably overlook our property, we do have some trees along there, which gives us some screening. And on and but I'm thinking that people that own the property in front of that are going to be. Almost imprisoned by whatever barriers are expected. Uh to be put around, you know, the apartment complex. So I don't think it's going to be very aesthetically pleasing, and I don't think it's very kind to them and as well, but. On that note of screening, I don't know what the requirements are for apartment complexes. But we'd like to know what the expectation is, how high does a barrier go, um and and what materials are used to. Uh because we have some concerns about having. I don't know how many hundred people right behind us, um that, you know, and and. Uh we we, security is an issue and so forth. The other question I have is um. Lighted parking, are these parking lots going to have lights on all night long, which could be a concern for. I have a very difficult time sleeping at night with any with the um the um microwave light if I'm in a hotel. So or the smoke alarm light, so I would like to know what the requirements are, what's or the expectation is for that being lighted. And I, again, I think that's going to be very unkind for the people that have the property that's going to be surrounded. And I I'm sure all of you can be thinking about them as well, but um. The other question, of course, some other people are probably going to raise is the concern about water. And other um utilities for Dallas, the uh improvement, street improvements, I mean, the lot, the intersection at Lyle is not. The only issue here, I'm looking at the the driveways that are going to come off of this property and. Those two to the south on James Howe are pretty close to the intersection, you're going to have. those two to the south on James Howe are pretty close to the intersection. You're gonna have people backing up um, with, with people trying to come out of those driveways as well. And, and I don't think that this, that James Howe is wide enough there to put a turn lane in to let people be able to turn right and avoid, you know, I'm just saying for traffic control there. I think that's I mean, there are lots of other questions I could raise, but but living right behind this property is, is, uh, going to be a very interesting thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm sure the applicant will be able to respond to your questions. Okay. Someone else over on the door side of the room, step right up. Oh, there's somebody behind you. You'll go next. On deck.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to come and speak. Uh, my name is Cliff Merritt. I live at three nine eight Southwest Applegate Trail Drive here in Dallas. I too am not really opposed to growth. I know it's going to happen whether we like it or not, and it needs to. Um, but I do question our water system, um, from your guys' website. There is still an existing water conservation plan because of lack of water. Asking people to reduce their use, um, by adding more and more without improving the infrastructure first. In my personal opinion, is kind of like putting the cart before the horse. Um, we have a lot of building going on in this town. There's um, just east of the recycle plant on Ellendale. There's a, uh, what's it called? Apartments and a, uh, sorry. A retention pond that's going in.
Right.
Um, don't know how many apartments, I hear their apartments are going in there. Um, now this stack of apartments as well. But yet the water, to my knowledge, though I'm not on your committee, to my knowledge, we're two, three years away before Mercer Reservoir is going to be improved and up and running with more quantity. So I'm not sure if we're already having to reduce water, where we're gonna get the water to keep adding on. I, I just, I don't understand that. Um, I do also wonder about all the traffic that's going to be increased onto Ellendale, how that's all going to be handled. Um, there is not adequate bike lanes now, so talking about public access. There's not adequate usage there as it is. Um, and I see that house or that property that's being surrounded. And I feel really sad for that family because I would hate to have to try and raise a family being surrounded by that. I'm sure everybody else here would as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And when we get down the road and I, I think that we'll have some questions answered by our staff on the utility avail, the water and the traffic issues will be addressed before we conclude this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
Wendell Whistler, P O Box four three four, Dallas, Oregon nine seven three three eight. So I'd like to address the planning commission, um, on a series of issues that relate to this. The gentleman that was here, I lived at one five one zero five West Ellendale. And in the early two thousands, you guys put, approved the Oregon Trail subdivision. Okay, and it's expanding again. If they're going further west with that subdivision. Then you approved the Kingsborough Wyatt of that whole improvement there. Then now you're gonna do James Howe. Then you allowed Ellendale Manor to go in, which is kind of across from Burger King there. That's a three-story, high-density property. Then you approved Series Glen. Then you approved Eaton Glen. Then you approved Barberry one and Barberry two. And with all of those properties that you've approved for zoning changes, you've done zero improvements to, to eat Ellendale, east of the Main Street uh, intersection. I live on Ellendale on the east side, just past Fervilla. And there are times that I sat for over ten minutes in order to be able to make a left turn onto Ellendale. Because of the amount of traffic you guys have put on Ellendale. Okay, when, when you did the Series Glen, Eden Glen, Ellendale Manor, all of that, you made no improvements at Fervilla. Zero. Okay, I have a flashing yellow light and two flashing red lights and just, just east of me, the next house over, a woman was killed trying to cross the street. Okay, that happened two years ago. This past year, there was a, a elderly gentleman and woman that were both injured in a car crash off Orchard View. Okay? So with all of this improvement, and now you're gonna add a hundred and twenty-five cars or, or more, because these are not low-income houses. This is high-density housing, and I'm guessing there's gonna be more than two cars per family. Okay, cuz it's high-density and it's not low-income. So I have a real problem with the fact that you guys aren't imposing requirements when you do all of these subdivisions, okay? I know for a fact that in Oregon, planning and zoning commissions have required developers to put in traffic control before they allowed them to build all that, build out that property. You guys have not done that at all as a stipulation and it's making my life miserable at the best. Because of the number of cars that are on there. Where I live at, there is no other outlet other than onto Ellendale. Same with Orchard View, nothing there. Okay? Got nothing but drive out, pull out onto Ellendale. That's it. There's nothing that goes back to the south or gives us anything off Laura Lane or anything like that. So I would like to encourage you to increase the requirements for these developments so that whether it be the Levens intersection that you took from a, from a flow through to a three-way stop. My question is, when they did DRV, were there system development charges uh, required for that to, to improve Ellendale? And that's part of the money that, that you're now talking about for that um, intersection? You guys have got to do something with Ellendale to, to to, you need to require improvement from the developers when they put in this. Think about Eden Glen, Series Glen, Barberry one, Barberry two. That's over two hundred houses in there. Okay, with, with all of that, those subdivision right there, and they're adding more. Okay, and I understand that somebody has to work with the state because Ellendale's a state-required road. But if you go to the state and say, I have a developer, he or she or they are going to pay for the intersection to be improved this, and not be asking the state to kick in money for the improve, the improvement. Then things get done a lot quicker. But right now, I live out there and it is a real pain in the butt to make a left turn to come into town. It's even a pain in the butt to make a right turn with the amount of traffic that's going out of town at, at morning and noon time and, and quitting time. So you guys got to do something to, to make some improvement for the rest of us. If it requires you to work with the county and the city and the state, somebody's got to get off the chair and go do it. Because the rest of us are suffering and it's not equitable.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Adare Williamson and I live at one four three zero West Ellendale. So literally, this monstrosity that has been approved.
Yeah, good. First of all, let's, let's have respect for who's testifying, same that everyone gets, and please speak up and, and lean in on your mic there. And I, I don't know if that's gonna help people in the room here, but, and it's okay that you're soft-spoken. We just want to make sure that we can hear what it is that you're saying.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
A little better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want me to start from the beginning?
No, you're good.
What was your name?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Adare, A D A R E Williamson. And I live at one four three zero West Ellendale. Literally the house, the, the duplexes that are now going to be entrapped with this monstrosity that has been approved.
So that property that's in the center.
The corner, right there, building B and building C, I believe.
Right.
Right, so this is, I understand that every town in Dallas needs to grow. Totally understand that. We need that. But just because you can, doesn't mean that you should. Doesn't mean that you should continue to grow residential. Why are we not, as a town and a community, growing businesses and bringing business to our communities? Instead of these, these kinds of housing developments? Just because you have empty properties, empty fields that used to be productive in our town and bring revenue to our towns and our, to our town and our people. Doesn't mean you should now build these kinds of monstrosities. If these were, if this, it sounds like to me, not, I, I don't, I'm not a planner, but the application that, uh, in additions or amendments that we went through at the beginning, it sounds like they're trying to, to put too much onto this tiny little piece of property. When does that, when does somebody? And who is that that says, no, this, this lot is too small for this? Clearly, you're trying to put too much into this piece of property and you're not really, in my opinion, taking into account the people that actually live on that corner and the surrounding area. I think it is everybody has a right to a place to live. And I'm not saying that I'm opposed to people living anywhere. But this, this is a terrible situation. This is a terrible intersection to have this. You I, I don't know if any of you live on or close to this intersection, this side of town. The gentleman who spoke before is correct. Ellendale is a nightmare. If you do not time your leaving your property in the mornings on a school day, by a certain time, it can take you up to twenty minutes to get out of the city limits on the other side of Ellendale. That is ridiculous. Ellendale is not that long. It should not be taking that long. If this is gonna be, this is an apartment complex, how many children are gonna be living in this? Where is the bus stops going to be? For this, is it gonna be on Ellendale? Is it gonna be on James Howe? Has that been considered? Because the amount of bus stops on Ellendale already are ridiculous. Not just on the west side, but the east side also. It is terrible. And just because you have twice as many parking spaces as the units, where are their guests going to park? Ha- has that been thought of? So you've given enough spaces for the people who live there. What about their guests? You'd think they don't have guests? Company come over? Where are they gonna park? There's no parking on Ellendale. There's no parking on James Howe. So where are they gonna park? So you've created an unnecessary safety issue. And the speed on West Ellendale is thirty-five. Do you know how fast people drive on that strip of West Ellendale? And you have now added up to a hundred and twenty-four extra cars just for the people living there. Not including their guests and the more other development that's already been approved. This is a terrible idea. Terrible idea. And I'm really dis- quite disappointed in our, the city that I live, that I choose to live here to build something like this. It is very disappointing that this is what is gonna happen. What about the elementary kids that are now gonna be flooded into Lyle School? Now our classrooms are gonna be bigger, our teachers are gonna be more overwhelmed. That, that makes no sense. Just because you can, doesn't mean that you should. It, it doesn't.
Thank you.
It really doesn't.
Thank you. And I'll just say, I'll just say, thank you very much for your testimony, and I'll just say that the City of Dallas and this planning commission reviews applications from property owners. So it's not City of Dallas project. Uh, we review and do site imply code uh, requirements to applications as they're put forward to us. I just want to make that clear for the record based on what you said, but thank you very much.
Sure.
And I'm sure that the applicant will be able to address at least some of your concerns when they rebut at the end of testimony.
How many applicants does the, does this, does this committee deny and say, no, you, we're not going to allow you to build?
Well, I can't answer that, but it's, the, the record is public and you can certainly look into it because we do do that. Does, it does happen.
And we deny it based on not following the rules that we have to follow, not because we don't like them.
This isn't a person, I, I'm not personally, I don't know these developers. I don't know them at all. It's not a personal attack against them. It's not a personal attack against you. I'm, as a commissioner, I'm just clearly saying what I said. Just because you can, doesn't mean you should.
Thank you very much.
It doesn't make sense.
Appreciate it. Who would like to go next? Cover this side of the room, anybody over here? Just raise your hand. Ma'am, please step forward. Thank you.
I'm not gonna talk very long. You guys can read my concerns when I send them to you, but I'm that white square. And I bought that white square to raise my kids.
Oh, you need to say your name.
Sorry, my name's Becky Knothar. I live at one one five James Howe Road.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
And if you're going just based off of all the exceptions that you have presented here, I would like to highlight the one about the walking. We're almost directly across the street from a park. That's where my kids go and how they get there. And now you want to make exceptions about them to even have a walking space to get there. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Take your time.
I don't know who would think that apartments on the outskirts of town was a good idea, but it's not. You're gonna add all of that traffic in front of my house and the people around us, her and the duplex. And you won't even give us a fucking walking space. That's not fair. We live here. They're, they don't. We're the residents. We're the taxpayers. It's not fair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So if anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's David Mills. I live at ten ninety-eight Southwest Forestry Lane in Dallas. And I just wanted to, uh, just touch on what some of the other folks said. And, and I agree with them. I would like to, to know where the, where the development plans go, where the planning commission goes with regards to Ellendale and and all these developments that are, housing developments that are popping up. That, uh, Ellendale just can't handle the, the load. Is there any plans to, to expand Ellendale? What are you gonna do? I mean, it seems pretty and like it's not feasible at this point. Are you gonna potentially look in building another road to the highway so people can have access that way? At this point, it's not feasible to keep throwing more and more people in there, especially when there's not a whole lot of jobs in Dallas. These people are commuting out of the city. And, and they have to use that thoroughfare, the only one for the most part, to get in and out. Again, the, the water issues. There's plenty of people with concerns with that. What are the thoughts and concerns with the water? And, uh, as far as this goes, I, I thought this was a affordable housing. Is this considered affordable housing or is this not gonna be like, uh, it's not. Okay, so that, there's other concerns that that would be involved with that. But, uh, those were just some of my concerns with, with that. Like, like she said, just because you could, should you, based on get the infrastructure in place. Like, like she said, just because you could, should you, based on get the infrastructure in place first? And then we'll deal with putting a whole bunch of people in there. I know that tax money is juicy, getting the property tax and all that stuff coming. Then you can build infrastructure projects like that. But I think you need to, to really look at the folks in the community first, especially when these people, there's not a lot of jobs that these people are working at in the city. They're all commuting out of the city to go to these jobs. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Who would like to go next? Okay, so we've had one, two, three, four, five. Say, okay, there you go. Step right up. I was gonna say we've had six people testify. That's pretty good. That's why we're here. We have all the time in the world to get through as many folks that wanna testify as, as.
I'm Noel Teal. I, uh, live at sixteen ninety-four James Howe Road, a ways away from the development. I just have to say, I, I can't just necessarily talk about, maybe they meet all of the qualifications uh, of the planning commission. Uh, but I do have to say that the amount of traffic on James Howe Road has increased tremendously. Not just in Dallas, but also upon the gravel part that I live on. Uh, they, they sing through there faster and faster, fifty-five, sixty sometimes on the gravel. Uh, I, I live on the east side. And with that said, just, uh, two nights ago, a guy screamed by, I was gonna turn left into my driveway. And a guy screams by me at about fifty-five or sixty and made no effort to stop. I don't know if he thought that I was just, uh, going to, uh, signal him on by, cause he was going real fast. But I was slowed down to go into my driveway. So I know that's Polk County, that's not City of Dallas, but this affects a lot of people. And whether or not it, uh, meets all of the standards, there's also a moral issue. That's all I've got to say.
Sure. Thank you, Noel. Anyone else? Ma'am, step right up.
I just had a couple of things I was concerned about. My name's Barbara Advey. I'm at fourteen oh one West Ellendale Avenue, unit eighty-six. It's right across from James Howe Road.
Okay. Did you sign in, ma'am?
I didn't.
Okay. Um, we'll get you. Did you get her name, Ben?
Um, could you please state your last name again?
Yes, Advey, A D V E Y.
Thank you.
People have talked about the water and something that hasn't been brought up is our water pressures. That I live, you know, across in the over fifty-five community.
Oh, right.
The water pressure in that area is terrible, especially in the summer. And I've really got, yeah, a lot of concerns about the water. That's another one. I don't know if there's gonna be enough water pressure, you know, um, for everyone. And, um, I thought I heard somebody say that, that, the issues with fire and, and that had been looked into. I didn't hear clearly, but I've really got concerns if we ever had a forest fire or anything out in that area. There's no way we could all get out of there. There's James Howe and there's Ellendale and that's about it. And that's something that's very concerning to me too. And I don't know if, if it would be, you know, something they could look into. And that, those were just my concerns that had been brought up.
Question was, does the development itself, has it been reviewed for fire access for the safety of the buildings that are being proposed? Not, not the, not, not fire safety for the whole area.
Okay.
So that's, that, that, that's a concern that we have not heard or was addressed. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? We're getting close to last chance here. And is there anyone that's joined us electronically, Ben? There's no callers on the line. Ma'am? What's that? You certainly may. Oh, oh, you've already been here. Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Go, go ahead. Yeah. Well, for the, for the purposes of get, you have an opportunity to say everything.
I just had one more thing that.
Say your name one more time.
Susan Sutherland.
Okay.
And my husband and I reside at fourteen sixty West Ellendale, which is in the city, which is right above this picture on the screen. And we also own the vineyard that's right there on Ellendale at one, five, three, three, five, West Ellendale. And one thing that we brought up when, um, there was a discussion of, uh, uh, up James Howe at um, three thirty-five, which was right next to the vineyard we used to own right up there. Um, one thing that we brought up was there's, we have a, a farm forest designation of our property to the, to the west of all of this. And one thing that the city council people didn't know, didn't understand was, you know, when, when we, in order to maintain that, we have to farm. Okay, we have, how many acres? Fifty? No, to- total.
So you're in, in EFU zoning designation in, under county jurisdiction?
Yeah, we're just, in fact, we have the urban growth boundary on as our, our eastern boundary.
Gotcha. I know.
And as all of this development comes our way, well, that's one of the reasons we sold the vineyard on James Howe was because we thought Mrs. Anderson's property was gonna be developed. We came, we went to that meeting years ago at the city, at the city hall. And we thought that, 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 that's the, on the corner of James Howe, it's all that open, um, hayland, you know, that's being used for hay. That was all supposed to have been developed, um, years ago and started there. Now they just decided to go up James Howe. But the issue with that is we've had people spray herbicides on their hay and on, in their yards and things like that. And, and grapes are very sensitive to those chemicals. And you can kill it in your, we lost rock that year. We lost a lot of that, that one year that we had that happen. So just to bring it to your attention, when you're taking into consideration the number of things coming our way, um, it makes it very difficult for us to continue to farm. And we have to do that in order to maintain our deferral.
Sure.
So, you know, if, if you didn't understand that before, when all these houses come in, Ben, and all these um, it makes it difficult for us to continue to do what we have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Go around everybody one more time. If there's anybody else. Oh boy, here we go. Well, if you're gonna talk, you gotta, you gotta step up and do it on the record because that's what we're here for. Try and do this in an orderly fashion.
So Chase, there's a creek. Can you bring up the picture that shows the creek?
Your name again?
Wendell Whistler. The old box, four, three, four, Dallas, Oregon, nine, seven, three, three.
Twenty-one eighty-one, East Ellendale.
Yep.
Gotcha.
So in the right corner of where their, their, their red box is, right across the street from that floods almost every year. And I know you guys have put two repentance on the king. What are you looking for abatement? Because now you're gonna put all that under parking lot. And my, my belief that even though you're gonna put the rain drain or whatever you wanna call it on the, on the west side of James Howe, that water's gotta go somewhere. And it floods across and, and I mean, it's a pretty severe flood. So what are you guys gonna do about abatement or improvement so that it floods there?
Thank you. Okay. Well, is there anyone new that would like to testify this evening? We appreciate everyone taking your time to come down this evening. I think it's just a listen. So what I'm gonna do is I'm going to, uh, based on what I'm seeing out there, I think that we've concluded public testimony. So, uh, let me catch up to where we are. So, uh, we're, yeah, I'm, I'm just getting there. We didn't have, uh, we, we, we've let everybody testify. So now it's an opportunity for the applicant to address anything that they've heard, that they believe is applicable to the, that they submitted. So step back up and any of those concerns you would wish to address? So that we have a complete picture in addition to the folks' testimony, uh, go ahead. And you've got five minutes.
Sure. I mean, regarding criteria, I mean, I think, I think we made it a lot of, uh, questions about parking and zoning and density and why this project is going on a site like this, uh, but it's zoned for it. And I mean, we're doing our best. I mean, eighty-four parking spaces are required. We're providing a hundred and twenty. I do a lot of multifamily and that's pretty generous, generally typically have a developer to provide all that additional parking. We're not at the full, um, we could add more housing. We're, we're not at the full density requirement. But we just didn't want that for the site. And I, I do want to address some people's comments. Uh, Susan, um, there, there's actually a number of people that were living directly adjacent to that and I appreciate them coming out uh, and, and speaking about it. What we can do, uh, we're pretty generically showing a lot of evergreen hedges right now around the perimeter of the buildings and parking. Um, I would like to work, uh, with some of these folks, especially, uh, Becky, to kind of see what we can do with those evergreen areas, whether it's arbor vida or, and probably talk with you, Chase, and see what we can, we can do there. Uh, to kind of increase the shielding and make everybody as comfortable as possible. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Uh, as far as lighting goes, it's gonna be required. Um, and it's pretty typical of all jurisdictions that have fully shielded lighting. You're not, there's, you can't have light trespass on neighboring properties. And I think in the case of Susan, you'll be totally fine. Parking lots are, are pretty far away from your, your spot. Um, I can't really speak to the water supply or, or the traffic. We, we are having a little impact, but, um, you know, it, it seems like more of a Dallas issue than this architecturally or, or development wise for this. Uh, I don't wanna speak for the public hearing, but the issue came up of, of flooding with, with Wendell. I mean, all of our water on site is, is managed on site, right? All stormwater is, is, is taken care of here. So we're not gonna be adversely impacting the site. There's not gonna be crazy flooding because we're, we're doing this here. It actually should be better managed. It will be more well managed because of, uh, of this development. And with Becky too, uh, so we're not, not including sidewalks. I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, the one comment I had made about the condition of approval is that there's new street going east and west through the site. Um, that'll eventually go to somewhere. Uh, but we were just asking for sidewalks on one side of that street just because of grading challenges. So you're gonna be able to get, uh, access to James Howe either way. Um, and we are improving, um, so we're improving. So it's gonna be a better sidewalk, walkability condition, uh, with buffers in the sidewalk and the road. So it'll be safer as well. Um, and the site is, we'll have pedestrian walkways and it's gonna be accessible, uh, needs to be. So we have access to and from the site will be taken care of and we're actually contributing to the right of way as well with this project. And to clarify, this is market rate housing. Sorry, crossing a lot of traffic comments. I think that's it.
List. So, okay. Anything else you'd like to add before, because this is your last chance to talk? Okay. Well, thank you very much. What's that?
Ask a question? Just more about, well, I can ask it of Chase later.
Yeah, that would be more appropriate. You've got an opportunity to ask final questions about that, city attorney, et cetera. So. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're there. This is our, uh, before we close the public hearing, this is our chance to ask any climate comments or questions. Are there comments or questions from staff? Before we move on. And do we have any questions for them? Is our last chance to sort of talk under the umbrella of the public here?
I'm sorry, were you asking?
Do you have any questions for, or any clarifications, any comments?
Um, I mean, we heard a lot of, uh, comments about, uh, you know, the, the water supply and, and the traffic. So, um, if you'd like a response to that, certainly I'm happy to provide the best I can. Um, I know it's something that kind of comes up, uh, quite frequently in, in these sorts of, uh, development applications. Um, we do have a master plan, uh, to increase our water supply, um, for the city. Uh, we, we have actually adequate water that comes out of our watershed. What we're lacking is, uh, summertime storage. Um, and so we do have now a, uh, plan to that happened. Um, we do now have a plan to, uh, expand the Mercer Reservoir, um, which will, uh, basically like double, triple our, our water storage capacity, um, which should accommodate, uh, quite a bit more development, uh, well into the future. Um, so, uh, water is, uh, uh, an issue that we're aware of and are, are working to resolve. Um, and the city council actually recently passed a, a, a rate increase to help pay for that, uh, project over time. So definitely something that we are aware of and, and working, uh, towards resolving. Um, as far as, uh, traffic, again, that, that comes up, uh, quite a lot as well. Um, and so, uh, to the extent that, uh, again, uh, Ellendale, uh, uh, east of Main Street is a state highway that does sometimes tie our hands in what we can do. Um, but we do our best to, uh, uh, kind of hold developers accountable when they are having, uh, impacts to, uh, to development. Uh, the Barbary Node, for example, developers there are, uh, paying a special fee for every house that gets built, um, specifically to pay for, uh, for Villa Traffic Signal. Um, uh, other developers elsewhere are paying specific impact fees. Um, one of the proposed conditions of approval here was to have a, a fee for this development to help pay for the traffic signal levens. Um, in addition to that, we have just general development fees that apply at a kind of all properties citywide, um, to help pay for, uh, you know, miscellaneous, uh, transportation improvements, uh, kind of citywide. So, um, we do have, and of course, we're always pursuing, uh, grant funding as that becomes available. So, um, we're, we're quite proactive in trying to address these kinds of issues. Um, we are pursuing, um, one of the questions that was asked, we are pursuing, uh, our, our transportation master plan, um, uh, calls for new, uh, east-west streets through the city, not just Ellendale. Um, and so on, on the east side of town, we're working to have Henkel Street become a through street. Um, going all the way from Main out to Furvilla. On the, the west side of town here, uh, we're trying to do the same thing with Denton. So Denton would go kind of all the way from Main Street out to, uh, James Howe Road, uh, providing kind of that bypass from Ellendale. So, um, we are working to try and alleviate traffic, both construction improvements to Ellendale, but also providing alternate routes, um, as well as alternate mode, like the, the recall creep trail. It's a major component of the transportation system plan, the parks master plan. That bicycle pedestrian connectivity.
Well, let's get right to it. Here's my question. Department, is there, is there water capacity to serve what's being proposed to? Yes. Uh, it, with the improvements that are planned for the Levens, uh, West Ellendale intersection, can our transportation system handle these sixty-six? Is there capacity in our transportation system to handle this development?
Yes.
Thank you.
Follow up question.
Okay.
Um, you talked about the different, uh, fees that are going to signals. And I know that one of them is due to go in pretty quickly. I think it's the one by Lyle School.
I believe that's, uh, scheduled for the near term.
Can you tell people when to expect that or what you estimate to be the time it'll go in?
I would defer that one to Tom Gilson, cause he's more on the ball with the capital improvement project timelines. Do you know what the timeline is on that one?
For Levens, Ellendale?
Yeah, is that twenty-five, twenty-six or twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yeah, twenty, we're trying to get it to twenty-five, twenty-six, so late, late twenty-five construction season.
And then Furvilla is further down the road. What's the target for that one?
That's, I mean, we, we have to work to know that.
Thirty, thirty-two. Later?
For thirty, thirty or thirty-two, uh, I would imagine before that.
Okay.
But, uh, again, that's when we.
Just so people understand that things are in the works and we actually are trying to get some of those intersections resolved. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions the commissioners have, uh, comments before I close the public hearing? Andy, go ahead.
On the site map that you've got up, that section of sidewalk that's white heading. On the site map that you've got up, that section of sidewalk that's white heading north. Is that not to be constructed now until that creek crossing happens? And is part of what we've got in the condition, will that take care of that sidewalk as well?
The, so the white doesn't mean anything in this context. When they give us development plans, their CAD drawings, and so for our presentation purposes. I kind of go through and clean them up and remove all the unnecessary stuff, so it's not distracting. And I forgot to remove the white that was hiding under that sidewalk.
That will be constructed sidewalk as part of the James Howe improvement?
I would expect that that would be constructed to the extent that it's feasible. Again, that area is where you have the creek crossing. So it probably would not extend all the way to the property line like it's shown. It would. Have some kind of stopping point where that creek crossing would begin. We don't at this time have engineered drawings of that.
Later anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have. Okay, well, then we will move forward. I now declare the public hearing closed at eight thirty-nine PM. And now it's our time to deliberate on this topic by. So commissioners, I'll speak last. Next to last, what do we think about this?
Well, concerned about. Trapping. The. Vegetation we put in. So if there's a way to create a balance between. Locking in that house so that they feel like in versus having something to buffer. From the noise, which will obviously be there, and the light from the comments. I don't know how to be. An expert, but there's got to be a way to. Maybe even work with the people that.
Okay, thank you.
Chase, toward that, can you put up the aerial so we can see what's in that box?
So is it, I keep hearing it's a duplex? Is there more than one building in there?
And learn how to live right here.
So there's just one house in that box? Okay. Right there, that's just, that's the duplex.
Right.
Okay.
We're talking amongst ourselves. Thank you, man. Okay, that's okay. We've got to, we just got to do it right. That's okay, you did help. So there are two, there are two residential properties that are sort of. Well, cut around by property that's being proposed for develop.
Got it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, commissioners? Anything else you'd like to discuss?
I can if nobody else does.
I was just curious, is it? You know, I'm assuming there's going to be lots of kids as well. Busing and all of that. Is there a plan for a playground or? Good question, something along those lines.
So obviously, there's nothing that would prevent the developer from adding a playground if they were to choose to do so. The. Thing is that we do have for common open space and multifamily developments does call for a certain level of improvement. And so there's a sort of call for things like, you know, best walkways, benches, play equipment, those sorts of things. One of the kind of things that is a priority for. Common open space is the preservation of environmental features. And they do have a fairly significant wetland on that property as well as the creek. And so in terms of kind of checking the boxes of, okay, so what things are you providing in your open space? That preservation of the natural areas is kind of high on that checklist. I guess it's not really a checklist, but you get what I'm saying, so. That kind of satisfies the regulatory requirement of what they're supposed to do with their common open space. Again, doesn't prevent them from saying, hey, we want to, you know, have this, you know. Thirty by thirty foot area here be, you know, playground or whatever, like they could do that. But from a regulatory standpoint. Yes.
They're not required to.
Right, and even if. Even if that wasn't the case, and they were required to do so, there's an exemption if you are within a certain number of feet of a developed city park. And so they are immediately right there next to Kingsborough, and so. That would. Get them to the point of having that exception, even if they didn't already have that natural feature that they were having, so.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or we're deliberating, so Andy?
We've had a lot of discussions about pedestrian connections and. Looking at our conditions, I believe we've addressed all those and we're going to be requiring those. Pedestrian sidewalks and things, and with the other questions we've asked. I think we've adequately addressed. The issues at hand, and I think the developer seems to be amenable to. Addressing some of the community's concerns specifically. With working with the property owner in the little box. And switching that building around that we hope we can do administratively so that it's not. Directly looking at that building. I think that would make more sense. Have it look at the parking lot anyway. I'm not sure what they're going to do as far as windows on that side, but I'm sure they can, that's something to deal with later. This, it looks like we've adequately addressed all the requirements and I'm. Will vote to approve it at this point.
Yes, your packet does have the architectural rendering, so kind of the elevation view of the building. So you can see that one side of the building has quite a few more windows than the other side. And so rotating that building to have the side with the windows not facing the neighbor. I think would address some of that privacy kind of concern as well, but. That's towards the end of your packet there, if you wanted to take a look at that, so.
Do you have an estimated time when? This would begin, the process would begin, should we approve?
No, that's. Not, really not relevant to what we're discussing, but it's a good question. Maybe we can.
The approval period is valid for one year.
There you go.
So they would need to pull a building permit for the development within one year. There is a code language that talks about granting of a one-year extension. Under certain circumstances, one of which being that the. Underlying code requirements haven't changed in that time, which I don't foresee happening in the near future, so. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Andy?
Good.
Well, I'll go last. I went back into the archives of the city website and I took a look at minutes from previous planning commission meetings, and I want to remind the commissioners. That in December of last year, we had, we were required to have a community discussion in this group. About Dallas's status as a rent burdened community. By definition, Dallas is rent burden. We have more need. For rental residential units than are available in our city limits, so we're required by state law once a year to have that discussion. And at that time that we had that discussion, we said to ourselves, there will come some times. In the next year, and that's where we're at right now, where some. Multifamily rental oriented properties are going to be proposed for development, and we need to bear that in mind, so I'm reminding us that. For the past three years now, Dallas has met the standard by definition as a rent burdened community, and I think it's important to remember that. The adjustment that is, that has been requested as part of this application to push the. The buildings back and allow the parking and the stormwater retention system to be. Forward, I, I think that's okay, and I think that we can just go ahead with the staff recommendations. For approval, I don't think that there's no need to require an additional variance for that. I think of the topography and the layout of the site warrants. In addition to the aesthetic purposes that were put forward, I think the most important thing is that it's just not feasible based on the topography of the site to do that. So to that end, you know, my position is, you know. As the chairperson, I don't make the motion, but I do vote and I'm in a position to approve this. So that's where I stand on it. If anybody has any questions of me or we want to deliberate further, we can certainly entertain that. If not. I would ask the planning commission, right now, is there a motion? To move forward with approval of this site design review application as presented?
I. Is it too late for that?
What's that?
Well, I was just wondering about the. The walkway or. Along the north driveway. That, or that one road that they're putting in is.
They asked if they, they asked if they could be.
No sidewalk.
Exempt from the, no sidewalk on the side. I believe that the way the staff report is written requires the sidewalk to be on both sides.
Um, so yes, but there is a little bit of an out there because the way that it's written. It would need to be on both sides at the time that it's dedicated to the public. There is an existing development agreement for the future improvement and dedication of the east-west street. So if it wasn't dedicated to the public at this time, but was dedicated in the future. Then that other sidewalk would be required at that future time rather than today. When would that future time be? I have no idea.
That's the time that they dedicate the street.
Yes, and is, and that would be when the city tells them, hey, the time has come. Is that five years? Is that twenty years? I have no idea. But that would be kind of the wiggle room in that requirement if you wanted to go that way. Or you could delete the requirement entirely. You do have a certain level of discretion as the planning commission, so.
Commissioners. Speaking for myself, I'm of the opinion to consider the recommendation as written in the staff report. With the ten conditions of approval as written.
I move to approve the application with the conditions stated by staff.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote on it by roll call, then, if you'll please go through us by name.
Commissioner Newell.
Yes.
Commissioner Spofford. Commissioner Schulte.
Yes.
Commissioner Kowash. Commissioner Gro.
Yes.
Commissioner Swanson.
Yes. Okay. So the motion has passed and it carries unanimously. I say for ourselves and for the folks that are present, an order reflecting the planning commission's decision tonight. Will be mailed to the applicant and all the participants of record within ten business days. So you folks that signed up here and that you testified, you will receive notice of decision. It is eligible for appeal to the city council. If there's anyone interested in pursuing that avenue. Please confer with city staff at your nearest convenience because there is a time limit on that. So that concludes our public hearing on. For SDR twenty-two, twenty-four oh-two. So that moves us on to, thank you very much, folks, for your testimony and. As I said. In ten days, all participants of record will be notified.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We're going to move on towards the conclusion of our meeting this evening to other business. Number six, it says on my agenda. Changes to limited land use decision-making process, so I assume that's going to be a staff.
Yes.
Do you want to go first or do you want me to go first?
You know, I'm always happy to let our professional legal representation go first.
Very good.
Hang on.
This is true, we do have people that are still walking out the door.
That's okay. I just want to make sure we're all heard. That's okay. So we'll start over. Changes to limited land use decision-making process.
So I'm going to take the lead on this one. So the Oregon legislature passed Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven. And that makes a number of changes to land use requirements. And one of the changes that it makes is related to limited land use. Decisions, and so we are going to need to be going through a process to update the city code to account for. This new law, and that needs to be completed by the end of the calendar year. Or we have to request a waiver from the state, which. Doesn't really make sense to do. We should get it done by the end of the calendar year, so we just wanted to give you a heads up that that is coming. And that will come before the planning commission for review of staff recommendation and staffer in the process of discussing that. Actually, meeting tomorrow to start working on this and get this moving, so we can get it done. That's right. Yes. Yeah, so there were several pages of that staff report that go through that requirement. And the bottom line is that it's got to be done by the end of the calendar year.
Right, because it takes effect January first.
Yeah, yeah, it requires, yes, yes. Anything further?
So that was kind of the big part of the discussion of code and process, so. It, having looked at it, it looks like it will have a significant impact on. The kinds of things that come to planning commission and how often. So. If you're finding yourself exhausted coming to these month after month. The workload might be getting a little lighter, so we'll see how this works out.
Yes, it moves multiple categories.
State issue.
Yes, it sounds like it's going to be Thursday. It's just because of kind of when folks are available. I know you specifically weren't going to be available and that I've brought that to Brian's attention. So we'll. Ultimately. Going to have to be what it is, so. I appreciate having you. If that's not feasible, then.
Miss Mother meeting will be here, so.
You finish what you started to say.
Now I know where I stand.
I'm sorry.
I was.
We're more important than that.
See how you are.
I was just going to say there are several. There are several categories of applications that will need, there are several categories of applications under the new law. That will need to move from planning consideration, planning commission consideration to staff consideration and approval. So one of those, I think, is subdivisions, for example, so.
Oh, wow. Or site designer review like we just did today.
Oh, good luck.
Yeah, so I'm not entirely enthusiastic over this, because I don't have you guys to point the finger at anymore, because now I'm going to be the decider.
Still refer it, right?
No, because state law says that I have to be the decider unless it's appealed. So it'll be.
So I'll start with. Public comments.
So that's one of the things that we'll be going through as part of the code amendment process is making sure all of the new requirements are codified, so. I don't have that answer yet in front of me, but by the time we bring this to you for public hearing and codification. We will have figured that part out, so.
And there are other decisions, land use decisions that are made administratively that don't come to us, that's still. Folks that are adjacent to a project still get notified and have an opportunity to comment. It's just not. A public hearing and it's outside of the purview of what we do here.
Generally, it's like a fourteen-day opportunity for written comment. And then if you don't like the staff decision, you can appeal if you submitted a written comment, and then it would come before. Well, that's, we will.
One of the things.
Well, yes, one of the. Before either you or.
To see appeal go to.
Yes.
Brief description, it's something very welcome.
Yeah.
I know that you.
Experts at more elbow room, more setting.
It's, the basically, the law was passed for the purpose of expediting. Land use applications that are related to housing in order to. Address Oregon. land use applications that are related to housing in order to, uh, address Oregon's needed housing goals.
I think it's great.
The, uh, part of that that's ended up, I think, being a lot more controversial is there's now obligations to grant certain kinds of variances, just carte blanche. You want a variance to setbacks, you get it. Sounds like the way that's written. So, um, obviously we'll be digging a little further into the nuts and bolts of that going forward, but, um, there are some other ramifications of that bill that were maybe not as well thought out.
All of this into the code. Maybe he should look at affordable housing again, kind of get ahead of that before our review in December. Since that project would have been perfect to have like five, 10 units of affordable.
Right. A certain percentage.
Some kind of percentage when we're rent burdened like we are would be really no problem.
Well, and I would also make a recommendation that when we get ready to talk about this, maybe, uh, have, uh, a couple of, uh, sort of generic case studies. It's like some, some, something specific that we can look at. This is the type of thing uh, with, that would, that you currently take a look at and we're going to do administratively. So that some, as we have the discussion, I don't want to have just sort of like a, a code level discussion. I want to have a practical discussion as to how it's applicable to the folks. That, that are constituents and our property owners here in our community. So.
For example, when I worked at the state, we had a bond of four percent program that put tax credits in it. And one of the requirements was that for you to give ons and tax credits, you had to have so many affordable units. The rest could be market rate, but that way you got a little carve out affordability with that market rate complex.
Anything else on code changes that we'll be hearing in the future? Okay. So we've kind of drifted into commissioner comments anyway today. Any planning commissioners have anything they'd like to discuss? John, I did see your, your, your note, uh, via email that you'd still like to have a discussion about planning principles, uh, outside of the state of Oregon and we'll fit, staff will fit that in when we have, uh, uh, when, when, when we have time to do that. And, and I don't mean to put you off, but it's not a decision that I get to make. In fact, I'm, if we hadn't had that first public hearing asked for a continuance, I think that we would just be finishing up with that one right now and just getting into the second one we had. So we kind of dodged a bullet tonight with, uh, having a really, uh.
Yeah, I was going to say it was looking like, uh, August was shaping up to be a pretty light agenda. So that would be a good time to do it. But then we had the continuance of our first agenda item to the August.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't see, I see that. I see the, the one that got continued. I see that more as being.
So we can hold off on discussion.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good idea. I, I was going to say, I, I, yeah, I, 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 I see.
This is why we have him here.
That's right. That's right.
Regarding John's point, if Chase is going to be doing all our work, we should have lots of time, January first.
To discuss all kinds of things.
May, maybe that could be part of our, uh, legally required, uh, rent and burned community.
There you go.
Meeting.
So let, let me just make one comment. Uh, I understand the burdens that are here and hopefully that will change. Uh, I'm in my third year here. And I have been starving for that whole time for us to have a strategic level discussion. We have never once done. And that's what I hunger for. That's what we need. You hear this kind of public testimony. You hear the angst in people's voices and the concerns in the community. What we do is focus on the technical and the legal. I understand what I understand the process. I appreciate the process. We do it so well. I don't think we hear the voice of the people well enough. And I, I lived in a place where that front end part of it happens differently. And the outcome is very different in terms of what the community looks like in 25 years. That's the conversation I want us to have. And is it going to be three years or four years or five years before we do it? My request is if we can't fit it in, can we have a special meeting?
Sure.
Weekend, anytime. It is that we, we are required by the state planning commission, the committee commissioners handbook to do this. To get input from the committee, uh, from the community and to, and, and to address the strategic part of our responsibilities, which we don't do. So that's my request that we actually do it. And it takes a special meeting to make that happen.
Right.
I respect that case.
I, 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 I appreciate that. I have seen and experienced in other communities where I've worked as a staff person more and in my opinion, better upstream and downstream relationship between planning commission and city council. I think it's interesting that we'd never have a joint meeting of the city council and the Dallas planning commission for strategic purposes.
That's part of my consciousness.
Uh, and I, and I, I think it's important and I will. I'll take it to heart and, uh, I'll speak to the city manager about it and, and see if we can't get a little bit more, uh, integrated. In, in, in terms of like community vision as to what, you know, you know, like I've said it before, we see, we're, we're, we're handcuffed by the code. We make decisions based on the code. The city council, because they're elected officials, have a little more latitude to consider, uh, 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 community concerns that are above and beyond what's in the Dallas development code or in the city charter. And so I, I, I would like to see a little bit more, uh, collaboration and strategic thinking between our elected leaders and us appointed leaders.
And what to me is a disconnect between what the planning commissioners handbook says and what we actually do, setting aside the city council.
Yeah, yeah.
We are supposed to be doing things that we do not do.
It's a good point.
We need to have that conversation. So thank you.
Well, and if, if, uh, the commission is wanting to have, um, I guess better, uh, connection with the, uh, thoughts and needs of the community. Um, there are various community events that, uh, we could potentially have you folks take part of. Um, I know that, uh, for the Dallas days event that's coming up, the building and, and planning departments, uh, have a booth at the Dallas days. Um, and so you guys would be welcome to show up and hang out and talk to folks, same as everyone else. So, um, that could be a chance to mingle with the people and kind of see what, uh, what's up.
Yeah, that could be. What I have in mind is a very different, very structured, very specific approach.
Sure.
To connectivity with the community that I've witnessed elsewhere. Nothing to say anything wrong with that.
Right. Okay. Yep, you did. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And you know, I'll just say, you know, while we're talking about this, you know, I, I've been my second year, I guess, as chair, my third or fourth year as planning commissioner, I've never I've never seen the Dallas city council invite the planning commission to the city council meeting. I've never been invited to come and testify or give input. Uh, so like the whole, I would like to see a little bit, well, there, there's, there's a, a separation between us and them that I would like to close that gap a little bit and I will bring that up. Thank you, John. Okay. Staff, any other comments before we adjourn?
It's, uh, been really hot outside. If you guys could do something about that, that'd be great.
I've already taken care of it. When you leave, it'll be much better.
You know, see this, this is why you are the president of the planning commission. Uh, because you are forward thinking like that.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, folks. Well, thank you very much. Another productive meeting and be prepared for, uh, uh, a, a complicated session next month. Thank you.